Vice Mayor Chris Bratcher has our prayer and pledge, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone please bow with me for a moment, silence please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, June 24th, 2010. Council members, you have before you your consent agenda, you've had an opportunity to review that. Are there any questions?
Mayor, for no questions, I move we approve the consent agenda, second.
Motion, second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You also have the minutes of a special meeting, May 27, and the regular meeting, June 3. If you've had an opportunity to review those, are there any questions, additions or deletions regarding the minutes of those two meetings?
We approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion, second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Now, at this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading and ordinance, the tax rate ordinance.
So moved.
Motion, second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading, an ordinance adopting a budget and appropriations ordinance.
So moved.
Thank you. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to rezone an area along Franklin Road to Commercial Fringe CF District.
Move passage on second reading.
Second. Motion, second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to amend Appendix A zoning, Chart 1 pertaining to zoning uses in General Office OG and General Office Residential OGR districts, to add additional uses as a matter of right and by special use permit.
So moved.
Motion, second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to rezone an area, including 32 parcels south of East Clark Boulevard and along Dow Street, Highland Terrace, and North Highland Avenue, to General Office District Residential OGR District.
So moved.
Motion, second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to rezone an area, including three parcels to General Office Residential OGR District, and 13 parcels to General Office Residential OGR District located west of North Highland Avenue and south of Roberts Street.
So moved.
Second. Motion, second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Consider now for passage on second reading, an ordinance to rezone an area, including 29 parcels, located west of North Highland Avenue and along Lee Street, North Manny Avenue, Bell Street, and East Burton Street to General Office District Residential OGR District.
Overpass it.
Motion, second, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution expressing official intent that additional expenditures to be incurred in connection with certain public works projects and related expenditures for the repairing, improving, and remodeling of the aquatic facilities of Sportscom be reimbursed from proceeds of no funds or other indebtedness to be issued or incurred by the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Mr. Cromley.
Excellent.
Mr. Goodman.
Welcome. I didn't get far enough back quick enough.
No. And I shouldn't have sat on the back row, I could have turned around and looked back. Honorable Mayor members of the City Council, on January the 19th, a refunding resolution R9, oh, excuse me, O9R29 was approved in the amount of $3.2 million for the renovation of the pools. As to date, the council has obligated $3,545,140.75. I list what those commitments are, and what I am requesting is a new resolution be adopted, TNR20, which would increase that amount to cover those obligations to $3.6 million.
All right. So the council has already obligated $3.545 million, including $245,000 for architectural and engineering fees, construction contract for $3.25 million, and change orders for $40.417,000, and testing services for an additional roughly $10,000.
That was all included in the one package? Those are all not additional?
Those are all in the $3.545,140.
That's all, that question has been raised, Mr. Bratcher, and that's all included in what we originally did, there's no increase in the original amount. What we're doing is we're coming in and asking for the amount to come up to the amount that has been committed to this particular point. Are these any new charges? Are these what we've already committed to? This is what we've already committed to. And then there are some additional, there's about $50,000 extra in there, but that would not be spent unless it's absolutely needed. We do not anticipate another change order, but if there is another obligation, we thought it'd be prudent to go ahead and have enough that if we do have to make a change, then we can do that. Maybe you or Mr. Cromley can explain a little bit about, I know this facility was supposed to have been open about a month ago, or somewhere close to that, what we have in place for penalties for the contractor for not being able to do the data completion is what we agreed to. Mr. Bratcher, there was, in the contract, there was liquidated damages of $2,000 a day. At this point, what the city has directed is for Mr. Lynch from Johnson &amp; Bailey to get with the contractor, to start going through the daily records, to start looking at anything that may have been beyond the contractor's control, or if there was anything from the city's behalf that would have delayed the project, and then come back to the city with a recommendation, if the city has been damaged, what those damages would be in the amounts. Do you have a date, a condition date or something? One of the things that I wanted to announce tonight is Phase 1, which was the outdoor pool, we are having a substantial completion inspection Monday. If that substantial completion inspection goes well, we start that at 10 o'clock, we anticipate it probably will take us two to three hours to go through everything. If it goes well, then the city will take possession of the pool Monday afternoon. If that happens, we are less than a week from that point of opening the pool for the general public. And come Monday, if the inspection passes, then we will be ready to make the announcement of the grand opening.
So in this memo, we roughly have $54,800 and some odd dollars.
That's correct.
That could be in additional funds, so.
It could be, but we're not anticipating it.
Yeah.
We are going into the second phase, which is the indoor pool. As soon as we open the outdoor pool, we'll close the indoor pool, we'll start that phase. It's not as extensive as the outdoor pool, but there's unknowns when you get into construction, as you well know.
Where it's been reported that we're spending $400,000, we're going to spend $400,000 more dollars on the pool, but that's not factual?
No, that's not factual. And I did have a conversation this afternoon with a D&amp;J reporter, and he was looking at it as if we were adding to that, and that's not the case, and I explained that to him. That's why I want to bring it up, this is not new charges, these are. No. No, don't, all we're asking is to meet the obligations that we've made since we began.
Other questions?
I do, ma'am.
Yes, Ms. Harris, I'm sorry.
So the monies that you're asking for tonight, these are monies that were already approved?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So we just give them in increments of?
Yes, ma'am. When you start a project like this, you have a preliminary estimate from an architect, and that's before they get into the plans and specifications and the details. Our preliminary estimate was $2.8 million, the architectural fees on top of that was When we finally got into the plans, there were several things that Mr. Lynch found, unsuitable soils under the deck, drains that need to be replaced, several items that caused the bid, when it bid, to bid at $3,250,000. And so that bid actually exceeded the first resolution that was passed at $3.2. So at that point, we were already close to $3.5, but if you add the architectural engineering fees and the bid that was approved. So you come back, you add the change orders that we've had, we've had two, and just $40,000, that's like 1.1% of the total project, and that is really good if you consider change orders. So we've had very, very few change orders, what we've had has been really small in scope of the project. And then, of course, the city has certain inspections that are done throughout the scope of the project to ensure the materials that we're getting are quality, concrete testing to make sure that we have adequate strength within the concrete, steel testing, those kind of things. So those, all of that adds up to the figure that I have in my memo.
So the money tonight is already in our budget? We're not, you're not asking for additional, you're just updating us on where we stand?
What I'm asking for is when we do go in August or September to the market for the next capital, what this does is this sets in place the document for the council to be able to go back and refund the amount of dollars that they've obligated.
So this is just a reimbursement of what we already budgeted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, I was thinking it was additional, okay. I understand.
And I can tell you, it's, from the road, I've been over there during the middle of the construction, but from the road, it looks impressive, and I hear a lot of talk, I know there's a lot of kids ready to go out there and swim, and go down the slides, and a lot of excitement going on, so. Well, Mr. Bratcher, I can tell you, just being out in town, whether I'm in a restaurant or Kroger or wherever, people are approaching. Matter of fact, my neighbor came over the other day, used my driveway to load his grill, and there was five guys that came to help him, all of them having different children and different ages, and they all, to the person, asked me, when's that going to open? You know, our kids are excited, we can't even drive by without them getting excited about this project. So I think it's a good project for the city, it's going to be good for our citizens, and the one good thing is the way that we redesigned this pool, the way we projected, we should operate in the black in this facility.
Mr. Gilli.
Thank you, ma'am. Lanny, I'm telling you, Ms. Harris, when I first looked at this, I had in my mind what you were looking for was an additional $400,000 change order. If I've got this in my mind right, this is simply amending the funding mechanism or the funding vehicle so that that mechanism matches what we have previously approved to spend.
That is absolutely correct.
That's my first question. The second one is, at the current forecast, how many days late roughly do we think the contract is going to be?
Well, if you just went by.
24 days late right now.
Right now. But, you know, there's some things that we're looking at, that's what I said, we want to be fair to the city, we want to be fair to the contractor, so that's why we've asked our architect to get with the contractor, to look at all of the data, because they keep daily records, we have weekly construction meetings, there's a lot of material that move back and forth in terms of approval processes and so forth, so we've got to look at the fact that, you know, where was the slowdown? We know that one thing that delayed us was the, some of the equipment that went with the pool that was supposed to be here mid-May didn't get here until mid-June, and the contractor did everything basically in their power to get it here, but that's when it showed up.
But if it turns out that they are roughly 30 days behind after you make this detabulation, that comes up to how much the contract would owe us back in liquidated damages?
30 days would be $60,000.
$60,000, and they'd be prepared to write a check to the city for that if that comes to that?
The way generally that happens is there's an amendment made to the final.
Right, but the end result is we end up $60,000 worth of goods from the contract.
That's correct.
When I say write a check, I'm using that sort of slang word.
Right. Their check is less $60,000.
Our check is less. Any other questions regarding this refunding resolution?
I do, ma'am.
Yes, Ms. Harris.
How much does it cost to?
The initial fee will be $2 for children and $3 for adults.
Any passes?
There is a family pass that you can purchase for the summer, it's $150, or you can purchase other passes, we have a variety of individual passes for children, adults, and seniors, and so they can look at several different options for passes as well. And usually, those passes reduce it almost by half.
Other questions?
Lanny, is that not the same fee as at Patterson right now?
That is the same fee as at Patterson and at Sportscom. Both of those facilities are set on the same fee schedule.
Exactly.
Plus, one of the things I want to mention is, we do have a financial assistance policy. Our financial assistance policy is tied to the free and reduced lunch program, and in my 2009 annual report, I showed that if you equate the dollars to the passes that we gave for financial assistance, we gave out about $307,000 in financial assistance to families and children that couldn't afford to get in, and we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to come and enjoy their recreation facilities.
Any other questions regarding this refunding resolution?
Only other issue, it'd be nice if you could get, if we could get folks from one side of town to the other, it has always been an issue with Sportscom. And with this investment and this upgrade that you have, that's still going to be an issue probably. So we need to look into seeing if we can remedy that some kind of way.
I know that one of the things that folks do now is they do use the Rover service, it stops near Patterson, it does go to Sportscom. I think there's a transfer that they have to make to get to that destination, but that option is available for folks.
And I was just wondering, the mechanism we use, I think I understood you to say free and reduced lunch.
Yes, ma'am.
People, families, children get in free, are you saying that?
If they're eligible for the free lunch at the city schools or county schools, then they get in free to our facility.
How, what procedure do we use, like, when they come, keep them being embarrassed?
Well, what we do, Ms. Harris, is, we've got a very confidential way of doing that, we have an application process, they fill that out, they turn that in at any of the sites, that comes to the central office. We have a rec truck program that at the central office, we load it in as if they bought a pass. And so when they come in and they scan into our system, it's, you can't tell whether they got that pass through the financial assistance or whether they came in and purchased that pass.
Because I was just wondering, you know.
Right, because we value that confidentiality, and we want people to feel as good that's coming in that needs assistance as the ones that do not.
And I think, from Vice Mayor Bratcher, also serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission, I think that we have made a concerted effort to make sure that no child is left out from attending a city facility based upon finances, that, I forget the number that you told us at our, I think, two meetings ago, but the number of financial assistance that we have provided to the residents and the children of the community is pretty overwhelming on what we.
It's, well, I just said, it equals to about $307,000. Now, we don't exchange dollars, but we equate it based on the number of passes that we issue.
I commend you for that, that's good. I was just wondering, you know, kids being in line, safe instance, Chris and I in line, and the embarrassment of me being on free lunch.
No. When they come to the facility, they're checked in just like any other child? I mean, if you stood there, you wouldn't be able to tell.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Comments? Is there a motion then to accept?
I move we approve the recommendation.
Second. All right, you have a motion to adopt the resolution, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Goodman, we appreciate your hard work. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city attorney with regards to A, Fire Station Number 10, Revised Change Order Number 3, and B, approval of an agreement. Ms. McGannan.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg. Fire Station Number 10, as the council will recall, is a project that, there was a delay in completion, the contractor had difficulty in finishing the project, the city made a call on the surety, the surety got involved, the project got finished. It was finished beyond its scheduled substantial completion date. As outlined in my letter, we had $100 a day liquidated damages, and we were entitled to that under Mr. Lionel Lynch's calculations, which was reviewed by city staff from a period of January 9, 2009, until April 6, 2010. We have proposed a $22,600 reduction in the amount due for completion of the contract, which would be half of the amount we would be entitled to for that period of time, as a result of some negotiations between the contractor, the surety, and the city. Part of the willingness to accept less than the contract amount was reflected by the fact that, as things turned out, we did not put Fire Station Number 10 into use, and so the damage question for inability to use it was impacted. The change order before you, Number 3 revised, has been executed by your architect and by the surety on behalf of the contractor, has been reviewed by staff, and we recommend the execution of the change order to you, that would be the final change order on this project. After, should you accept that recommendation and vote on that, it would be asking you to approve the agreement that was also submitted to you, reflecting the rather lengthy process where we worked between the surety and the contractor and the city to try and resolve the claims that were outstanding, the surety had to pay a number of claims on behalf of the contractor, and this retains the city's ability to make warranty claims based on the surety. And there are certain operating manuals were still due, but it otherwise has a release of claims that had been threatened by the contractor, the surety acting on the contractor's behalf is releasing those, and we are releasing the surety except for the warranted claims as indicated. Mr. Lynch is here and would, as I, be happy to answer any questions about this, but the recommendation is that you approve separately both the change order Number 3 revised and the agreement.
Any questions for Ms. McGannan regarding this recommendation?
Questions, Mayor, first, I move that we approve the revised change order Number 3, which is such a matter of A, of a.
All right. You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you to the revised change order, you have a motion, a second, any questions regarding that change order? If not, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You now have the agreement, which is recommended for your approval, any questions regarding that agreement, you have it, I believe, before you.
We approve the agreement.
Second. All right, you have a motion and a second, any questions regarding the agreement? If there are none, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the legal department with regards to the extension of the signed moratorium, Ms. McGannan?
Thank you, Mayor Bragg. Mr. Ives and I are requesting that you extend for three months the moratorium you had previously imposed on October 1st for this new kind of sign that uses ink rather than lighting to display the message. Staff and council have worked diligently on this, and we expect to be coming to the planning commission with some recommendations shortly, but we were concerned that through the review and approval process, we would bump the estimate we had previously given you, so we ask for a brief three-month extension of that moratorium. And Mr. Ives or I will be happy to answer questions about the type of sign and the reason we feel this appropriate, but we did present that to you initially.
Questions in reference to this extension? It's in effect now, it's currently in effect, and this is a three-month extension.
So moved.
You have a motion, a second, to extend this signed moratorium to this type of sign, any questions regarding the extension? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Ms. Wright, do we have any beer permit requests?
Yes, we do, we have three tonight. Previously, I brought Antonio's Little Italy, which is a restaurant at 2441 Oakwood Parkway. Before we actually issued the permit, he wished to add a partner, so I'm recommitting that one. It has passed codes, and it is recommended for approval. I have two others that are close to passing codes, and in case we don't meet next week with the holiday, I thought it might be wise to go ahead and bring those contingent on passing codes. One is a restaurant at 810 Northwest Broad Street, and one is a convenience store at 1925 New Last Castas Highway, both are change of ownership and name changes.
All right, any questions for Ms. Wright? These appear to have met all of our requirements, and two are subject to final building and code inspections.
Move to be approved?
Second. Motion, a second, please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time, you have a list of statements requested for payment. You've had an opportunity to review those bills. Are there any questions regarding any of those items? Is there a motion, we pay the bills?
Shall move.
Second.
Motion and second, to pay the bills. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Regarding board and commission appointments, I've received a letter from the city manager that he recommends that Vice Mayor Chris Bratcher and Ms. Jean Anne Rogers be reappointed to serve four-year terms on the Murfreesboro Power Board. It's also Mr. Lawrence's recommendation that Ms. Sandra Trail be reappointed to serve a four-year term on the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Board. I make that recommendation on behalf of the city manager.
Can we take those in the bag for me? Kidding, I'm kidding. I recommend Jean Anne, she's good.
Mayor, I move we approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Pass.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Also, I recommend for appointment to the Evergreen Cemetery Board, and this is their recommendation of their cemetery board at their annual meeting, that Mr. Lawrence McCullough be added to the Board of Commission for the Evergreen Cemetery. Shall move.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Other business from staff or council?
Mayor, I have two items. We'd like for you all to set a special meeting of the city council, July the 12th at 4:00 PM, to consider your financial policies. Staff has worked for several months now to try to pull together a comprehensive set of financial policies. We believe they're ready for your consideration. Our representatives from PFM, our bond counsel, will be here. We'd like to set that in 4:00 PM on the 12th.
And that would be a special meeting?
Special meeting.
What day is that?
It is a Monday. 4:00 PM. Will that be held in this chamber?
Not sure we determined, Mayor, whether we'll do it here or in 2:18.
All right. You have this recommendation, is there a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. And the other item is appropriate to recognize counsel and Young for his election to the Tennessee Municipal League Board of Directors. Congratulations. Congratulations. No speech is required.
Thank you very much. I'll work hard for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman, since you're still here, and it has come to my attention just very recently that we might not meet next week, would you explain and kind of talk to us about the Fourth of July? I've noticed these white fluffy things that are tethered to the earth that have boxes of things that sparkle and go boom in the night that have started to set up across the city. So talk to us about the city-
You are exactly right. I've noticed that myself, Mayor. You see the big tents going up everywhere, which is a sign that Fourth of July is coming up. We do plan to have the pool open. That is our plan, and that is a Sunday, but we will be opening the pool hopefully early, around 10 o'clock, and we start with that program. We have a big family games and activities there in the pool, and we move from the pool out into the grounds at 5:00 with family games and activities. Have a lot of inflatables and a lot of different organizations and so forth that's represented there that's helping us with that particular event. At 8:00, we will have the symphony start to play, and they will play for one hour, and at 9:00 sharp, the fireworks will start, and the symphony will play through the fireworks. The fireworks take about 15 to 20 minutes, if you want to be exact, about 18. But it will be a grand show. It will be at McKnight Park, and we shoot the fireworks very close to the airport, and we do coordinate that with our airport director to make sure that everything is safe. That was one of my biggest fears when we moved out there, but it's going to be a great show. And so some of the other things I want to mention while I'm here, Mayor, that next weekend is Uncle Dave Makin' Days. It is also our first national soccer event, the President's Cup for Division Two will be in town. That will start around the 8th and run through the 11th. We'll have 36 teams in town, and that brings the National Board Meeting, which is three representatives from every state in our union to Murfreesboro for a week-long event. That event is, says that it will generate somewhere around $2.5 to $3 million. So we will have Uncle Dave Makin' Days in the middle of the city, we'll have the soccer event in the north portion of the city, and in the southern portion of the city at Barfield, we will be hosting the Tennessee Youth Baseball State Championships. So that'll be a very busy time, just to let you know.
Thank you. You and your staff do an excellent job, and we appreciate that, and the coordination of all those events at the same time just speaks to how well you work for the city, and please express that to your staff. And, of course, we always are proud to have visitors, and we really like having them stay for a long time when they come. That's a good idea.
Well, it's, the Chamber of Commerce has worked very closely with our department, with Hotel Motel Association, the Restaurant Association. They've all been a big part of this, and we anticipate pretty much all of the hotels full on that particular weekend. And remember, next year, we will be hosting the Region Three Division One, which is 180 teams, a week-long event. Economic impact somewhere around $7 million for that term.
Possibly more than South Africa is getting with the FISA and World Soccer.
I just hope they don't bring those horns with them.
That's right. Boo-boos, or whatever they are. Okay. And also, congratulations on well-run working with International Folk Fest last weekend.
All right, yes, that went very well.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Very good. Anything else, any other business from the council or staff to come before the council? If not, you're adjourned.